Okay, I want to welcome everybody. This is our first meeting. It's a new year, new start times. I hope everyone had a restful and good summer. It is my great pleasure tonight to welcome our three student school committee representatives from the high school. Two were able to come, Michael Chang and Arnav Mera. Betty Markham is the third, and she was unable to be here tonight. Michael, do you want to just stand up and let people know who you are? And Arnav? Okay. Michael is a junior, and he covers politics for the school newspaper. He has an abiding interest in the effectiveness in governance. Arnav is a senior this year, and he's enjoyed a long tenure as a school committee student rep since he was a freshman. He's interested in assessments and stress, and he sat on the handbook committee and worked successfully to limit the number of assessments given on the same day to two in order to lower stress and create more time for study and preparation. So, thank you for that work. Betty is also a junior, and she is interested in wellness. So, welcome to Michael and Betty and Arnav. Thank you for joining us and for your commitment to civic engagement, and we look forward to your participation in the future. I wanted to give you a little bit more background for the new school committee members and the public who may not be aware. The importance of creating this formal avenue for students to civically engage and express their ideas and opinions, to help inform school committee deliberations, is encoded in our policy JIB and in the Mass General Law Chapter 71, Section 38m. So, in addition to representing the AB students at school committee meetings, our student reps are also invited to join school committee student reps from across the state in a student leaders workshop run by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. There's actually one scheduled a week from Saturday on September 15th at Assabett Vocational Technical High School in Marlborough from 9:00 to 12:00. So, if either of you are interested, you're certainly welcome to attend. Student reps are also invited to attend an annual event held in April called Day on the Hill, when they join school committee members and superintendents at the State House in Boston to meet with key policymakers to advocate for our public schools and help our state leaders better understand the issues and challenges we face. And we will certainly publicize that coming up in April. Anyone who would like to know more about how students can get involved in school and district governance, please contact the school committee or the superintendent. Item three on our agenda is public participation. This is the time in our meeting when we invite members of the public to speak to us on items not included on our agenda tonight.
Hello, John Peterson, Jackson Drive, Acton. Colleen McElhenney is a 1987 graduate of ABRHS. She's a lawyer. Shin Lim is a 2010 graduate of ABRHS. He is a magician. Robert Bodoine is a 1967 graduate of ABRHS. He had a career of military service. Connor Stevenson is a 2011 graduate of ABRHS. He's a salesman. Catherine Perella Kellenden is a 1990 graduate of ABRHS. She's an artist. Eric Schmidt is a 2011 graduate of ABRHS. He is a bioengineer. This week, 5,000 students started the school year at the Acton-Boxboro schools. Some of them will be lawyers, some of them will be engineers, and perhaps, one will become a magician. Are we running a school of magic? Are we a pre-law school? Are we an art school, a military prep school, or a school for engineers? All of our students will be members of communities throughout their lives. Most of our students will be parents. Will their education be a stone in the foundation needed to prepare them to be members of the community? Will their education prepare them to be parents, some of whom may attend school committee meetings? As we start the school year, please redouble your efforts to take an expansive, diverse view of education. Do not shy away from acknowledging that some policies will impact only a few students, but be important nonetheless. Do create policies that are flexible, policies that may be administered, so that they can best serve the needs of the individuals in our diverse student community.
Christine Russell from 301 Lantern Road. I am speaking here as an Acton parent, and I am going to speak about incidents with children, but I assure you I will not be releasing any information about those children. I'd like to talk to you all about creating a disciplinary policy for behavior problems on the elementary buses. If you'll allow me, I will share a brief history of the issue that has brought the lack of a policy to my attention. Back in February of 2016, I contacted our vice principal at McCarthy Town School concerning a Miriam student, at the time a fourth grader, who liked to use excessively foul language. He said he would let the Miriam vice principal know of the situation, and I encouraged my kids to ignore the ongoing foul language. In October of 2017, I reported again to our vice principal that the same child, now a fifth grader, was swearing and calling other students perverts. He also yelled out the bus window to a passing student driver, asking them for a used condom. Our vice principal again indicated he would bring it to the attention of the Miriam vice principal. On November 6th of 2017, this student sprayed Axe Body Spray all over the back of the bus, nauseating the children, and then he proceeded to yell that it smelled like excrement. This was once again reported to the Miriam vice principal. Although I don't have a date, on another occasion, I reported to our vice principal that this child climbed over another younger student, physically kicked her out of the seat into the aisle. Our vice principal followed up with the girl, and the matter was once again left with the Miriam vice principal. On the final day of school last year, my sixth grader got off the bus with blood running down his face and tears running down his cheeks. The Miriam fifth grader had taken the last sixth grade seat on the bus. My son asked him to move. When he refused, my son sat next to him. The child repeatedly called him a pervert, pushed at him, and then aggressively grabbed at his face, giving my son a bloody nose. I reached out immediately to our McCarthy Town principal, our vice principal in transportation. I was clear that simply hearing that the Miriam staff would be told was not good enough. I was assured that I was understood and was told that it would be difficult to enact consequences once the child was no longer in school, and that they would have to happen at the beginning of the school year. When I reached out at the end of the summer to hear those consequences, I was told that the Miriam principal spoke to the family, and that was all I was going to be told. And as near as I can tell, that was all the consequences that occurred. And I'm sure you can imagine my frustration at watching this boy's behavior escalate over the school year with no real or lasting consequences, especially considering my daughter and this boy are now both in sixth grade and in seats at the back of the bus. My vice principal has not been able to articulate to me what, if any, consequences this child faced for his previous actions, and also cannot tell me what consequences he will face going forward. I assume that this is because he does not know, because there's no clear policy. Although Transportation sent home a packet on the first day that outlined steps for safety, getting on and off the bus, there's no messaging about behavioral expectations and guidelines or consequences for behavior issues during the ride. At this time, responsibility has been placed on my daughter to report this boy's behavior to the bus driver and the principal. Considering that there are three schools represented on our bus and on other buses, I'm asking that the school committee consider working with all the schools in transportation to adopt a clear, concise, and practical set of disciplinary guidelines for behavior on all of the buses and applicable to all of the students regardless of which school they attend. Thank you for your time.
So Christine, thank you. Certainly, if you want to contact me, I'm happy to talk to you a little bit more with details. Thank you.
Item number four on our agenda is a statement of warrant and approval of minutes. We have five warrants for you to sign tonight. Two payroll warrants, P-1904 and P-1905, three accounts payable warrants, 19-004, 19-004PR, and 19-005PR, the grand total of which is $2,522,603.4.
Dave? Diane, there was another warrant that was completed today. Can I bring you the...
Sure.
Or do you want me to read it?
Can you just read it out?
19-005 for $1,689.817, warrant number 19-005SH. That's for student activities, $24,609.38. Fender total is $3,18,309.90. Payroll total is $1,218,719.70. Grand total is $4,237,029.60. I apologize, the cover sheet is in the warrant package that went around, and I should have left it with you.
Thank you, Dave. Just as an FYI to the newer members, we do not need to vote warrants. Mass General Law empowers regional school committees to establish a subcommittee of no less than three members for the purpose of signing warrants in order to allow for the release of checks, provided that a record of our actions are made available to the entire committee, which is why I read them out. Our signature on the warrants is like our vote, basically. We do have a warrant subcommittee. So, hey, that takes care of that. Meeting minutes from 8:23. Your packet contains those minutes from the August 23rd school committee meeting, and I am now looking for a motion to approve those minutes. Beth?
So, I did receive comments from one person. Do you need to share them?
Please.
So, it's on page two, under the staffing report. In the first whole paragraph, it's there that starts with "members asked," and it's been suggested that we add a third sentence after Marie said that they were, and add the sentence that says, "Angie Sau," notice, "a total of 10 special education teachers are added." Marie responded that many of those are replacing teachers who left the district. So, it's the addition of that one sentence. And then also, at the end of that same paragraph, adding to the second-to-last sentence that now says, "Marie will send Angie Sau a link to the budget Saturday information about new staff," and it's been suggested that we add staff number and categories approved in the budget.
That's all I can say. I'm sorry. What was the last edit?
So, the last edit is adding the words "number and categories approved in the budget" to the second-to-last sentence. So, the revised sentence would read, "Marie will send Angie a link to the budget Saturday information about new staff, number and categories approved in the budget."
Do I hear a motion on the amended minutes?
Move to approve as amended.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes?
Aye, abstain.
Yep. Your packet also contains a revision of the meeting minutes from the July 23rd school committee workshop. I am now looking for a motion to amend the previously adopted minutes from the July 23rd school committee workshop to include the changes listed under item 5.3 therein. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at this in the packet. Paul?
Where did this come from? And then why are we changing that language?
I believe we are adding more detail from Marie's report.
You're revising.
We're revising it.
And adding a little bit, but something that was included originally might not have been 100% accurate. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. We move on to item number five. It is also my great pleasure tonight to welcome two guests that we have invited here tonight. John Mangiarati is the new town manager for Acton, and Ryan Ferrara? Is it Ferrera or Ferrara?
It's Ferrara.
Ferrara. Thank you. He is the new town administrator for Boxboro. I believe they both started July 1st, along with our superintendent, and they have kindly agreed to come here to introduce themselves to us and to answer any questions you might have. So, want to coin toss?
Yeah. Come on up. That's a good idea.
I will mention that we are being videotaped tonight for Acton TV.
Good evening. John Mangiarati, Acton town manager. Thanks for inviting me here tonight. It's a great pleasure to meet all of you, and I'm looking forward to working with Superintendent Light and town administrator Ferrara and all of you, not just on budget planning and financial things, but also community building. And I think it's a great opportunity that we've already had a lot of great collaboration just in our short period here, and I look forward to that continuing. So, I'd love to hear any questions that you have, especially easy ones tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Ryan Ferrara. I'm the new town administrator in Boxboro. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I live in Arlington with my wife and two children. They are entering grades four and six in the Arlington school system, so proud public school students, and so we obviously feel a close tie to the public education in my household. I'd like to note, this is kind of an interesting thing, coming full circle and seeing the student representatives here tonight, because that's how I began my career in public service, which was one of the first tasks that I did. So, it feels like a sort of coming full circle, seeing you gentlemen here tonight. So, welcome aboard and pay attention. Who knows? Maybe years from now, you might be in the same shoes. So, yeah, it is. So, the pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us, for both of us here. I think you have two days on me, John? Is that right?
Yeah. I started on 4th of July.
Fourth of July, and I started just afterwards. So, sitting here, I'm reminded of something that my former superintendent had told us. An old timer in town came to him at one point and said, "Superintendent Creeden, there's two things that people care about in this town. One is the roads, and the other is the schools." And let me tell you, Superintendent Creeden, the streets, they're not so good. So, you really do need to focus in on the schools. So, it's 60% of our budget. It's the partnership that we have here is a critical one. So, I view my role as to be a partner with Superintendent Light and with the school committee. I know tomorrow, I'm going to be attending the kickoff meeting for the Douglas School MSBA project. You know, we want to be a resource as our partnership sort of continues and the full regionalization effort continues. I'm looking forward to the challenges that that's going to come in with, but I know it's going to be a lot of communication and a lot of practicing and figuring out where we're going to be going with a lot of this. I'm excited about that opportunity. Between the three of us, we're all new, and we're excited about what that might bring, some new set of eyes. I'm already seeing the benefits of that where I am, and I know my conversations with John, and he's seen the same thing. So, again, thank you for your warm welcome, and I'm going to sit in for the rest of the meeting and see what the AB school committee is all about. So, thank you.
Yes, welcome. Thank you both.
So, Ryan and John, I told you this would be easy, but I also want to remind you, I am the elder statesman because I started July 2nd. So, I have seniority on both of you when we have to make decisions. I actually want to start my update before I talk about the first day of school by just recognizing that we did have a student pretty seriously injured during cross-country practice yesterday. I know it was a pretty scary moment for everyone. I know a lot of well wishes throughout the community for the student. I am happy to report, and we did send this out to families today, that the student is recovering and doing well, looking forward to getting back to school. So, you know, our thoughts have certainly been with that family and the student at this time, but I wanted to be able to give you that update, so we're pleased to report it. I also, I wanted to start and just make sure I thanked all of our faculty, students, staff, families for really what has been a tremendous opening of the school year, and share a little bit about that with you. So, we kicked off our festivities welcoming faculty back last Wednesday and Thursday, where they engaged in two days of professional learning, and it was my opportunity to introduce myself to teachers, but also really just get a sense of the energy and enthusiasm the faculty was bringing to welcoming our students back. We followed that up this past Tuesday by welcoming all of our K-6 students back into schools, as well as our seventh grade and ninth grade students to some orientation activities at the junior high and high school. Is this flying behind me? Nope, it just disappeared. You're killing my thunder here.
The pilot's getting into position.
So, I've had an opportunity, and this is in the memo, but I had an opportunity to get into a good handful of classrooms across the district, and I will say, just the level of relationship building that our teachers are doing with students was really heartening to see, coming as a new superintendent. Teachers taking the time to really get to know the students. That was something that I talked with the faculty about on the first day, is really get to know your kids, celebrate their strengths. And I think that the best moment I had was walking into one of our classrooms over at the Miriam School, and they were designing a solar-powered hot dog grill. And I happened to see it in the design stage, but what was one of the cooler things, when I asked our administrators to share some photos for this meeting with me, one of the photos that came in was actually the finished product of that hot dog cooker. So, you'll get to see that in a moment here. What I wanted to do was just share a few photos with you from across the district through the eyes of our administrative team. So, here's our first days. This was our staff opening day, and I put this in numerous letters, but I really talked about, I was hoping that all of our students through the Acton-Boxboro schools experienced four things while they were there. The feeling of being loved, the feeling of being valued as a unique individual, of being challenged, and also of being supported. So, that was kind of a theme that I wove throughout my presentation, and I wanted to share that with you. Here are some shots from Blanchard. I think the picture on the, I think it's on your right. Yep, it is. Picture on your right is really one of my favorite photos. It's actually one of our assistant superintendent's nieces. We did not plan it that way. She told me after the fact, but really just a neat, neat photo, continuing through Blanchard. Over at Conant, you're going to see buses is somehow a theme through some of these photos. I don't know why that came across, but you know, for some reason, it was on everyone's minds. And then, you know, that's Mr. Shagru in the background in the picture on the left welcoming students in, and then some of our kindergartners headed into the classrooms on the first day. Over at Douglas, students arriving, again, there's that bus theme. Again, you know, really just, it's really a celebration of relationships, and that's the foundation of what we do, but it's just thrilling to see students coming back and having that much energy and enthusiasm for the schools. Again, there's that bus theme. And there's that hot dog cooker I told you you'd get a chance to see. I think they did a fantastic job with it. I don't know. I wasn't there for it. I don't know if I would have been the person to taste it. All right, and here we go to McCarthy Town. There are those buses again. All right, Mr. Shen and one of our resource officers grilling for students on the first Little more from seventh grade orientation, and there is our class of 2022, I believe, right? So, very exciting photo to see. And again, this is some of the pictures from the ninth grade orientation. What you're looking at is some of the photos of students arriving for their first day of ninth grade, and also the ice cream social. So, this was, again, just to come back to that theme, this was actually the last slide of my presentation. Those of you who have seen it before, I actually updated some of the photos, so you can pay attention. What I did is, rather than the photos from last year as a recap, I used some of this year's photos. But this was just something that, you know, I wanted to express to everyone. It really has been a great opening. Tremendous work by all of our faculty, all of our administrators, and all of our staff to get kids prepared and really start this next journey for Acton-Boxboro. So, I'm thrilled to be here. It's been a great opening. So appreciative of everyone's efforts in supporting me entering. So, thank you. Do we want to go through the whole, or...
Amy?
I just want to make a quick comment, because I was at Conant for most of the morning for the voting, and we had a much higher turnout for voters than was expected. And the schools handled everything just beautifully. The kids just seemed to just, it just seemed seamless. So, congratulations to Mr. Shagru for really orchestrating, was really very, seemed very organized and well-done.
So, this next update, I'm going to be a little bit more deliberate and kind of stick right to my script that's in the memo, because I'm not sure if everyone here has the memo, but it's also something that I want to make sure we are accountable back to the community for. And earlier in the summer, we had a student die by suicide, and that was a very, very traumatic incident. And in the letter that I wrote to the community, one of the things I said is that I would come back to the community and talk about the supports that we've put in place for students, and how we're approaching that as students and faculty return this year, and also as we move into the fall. So, what I wanted to do is highlight a little bit of that for you. So, to go through this, but in July, right after the student died, we partnered with Riverside Trauma Center to support students, faculty, and families immediately following the incident. Additionally, Riverside returned to support faculty and staff at the high school, junior high school, and Blanchard Memorial School in late August, and were available in the counseling center for our high school students on September 5th. Our high school administration and counseling staff have also reached out to students and families who have been greatly impacted and have been meeting with them on an individual basis throughout the summer to offer resources and supports. On August 30th, our high school counseling staff provided professional learning for all of our faculty to remind them about the protocols we use in the event any staff member becomes worried about a student. They also offered to meet individually with teachers to discuss students and/or talk about how to introduce sensitive material during that first advisory period within the first few days of school. Our high school advisory program includes regular meetings between an advisor and a small group of students that has a clear focus and is something in which all students and staff participate. The first advisory at Acton-Boxboro Regional High School on September 5th entailed a lesson designed to acknowledge Jacob's death by suicide, speak to the wide range of reactions and emotions to news like this, and to check in with students. Students had the opportunity to jot down some concerns or questions on index cards and turn them in so that the advisor or counselor could follow up with them. During this advisory, faculty also shared a list of material, excuse me, of mental health resources with students, which has been also sent out through Mrs. Trench's "Good Morning AB" message. I think that still probably means more to you than it does to me, I'll be honest, and reminded them that counselors, social workers, psychologists, and Riverside Trauma Center staff were available on September 5th for them through the counseling center. Finally, we have required that all staff complete youth suicide awareness and prevention of 40-minute online learning module designed to provide information to help staff reduce the likelihood of student suicide. This course covers common risk factors related to youth suicide, successful strategies for youth suicide prevention, immediate steps a staff member should take if they encounter a student who is threatening suicide, and best practices for post-vention. Each building is working to ensure that all staff know the protocol to use when they have concerns about a student. Some families or community members may wish to access additional information regarding current and past practices around mental health and suicide prevention. I would encourage interested individuals to visit our wellness site, and you've been provided the link, and we're also going to be sending that out to all families. Additionally, families and community members should watch for an upcoming QPR training, and QPR stands for question, persuade, and refer, which are three simple steps anyone can learn to help save a life from suicide. This is open to anyone in the communities, either community, and is free of charge, and it's developed through the AB Cares Coalition, and they will be offering these trainings throughout the community in the months to come. For more information on the first training, we're providing a link that people can register for that. So, we're very excited to be able to provide that additional resource for families. We're also working on kind of a family night where families can learn more about what's going on throughout both communities to prevent suicide at all age ranges and levels throughout the community. That's also something we're working on through AB Cares. We're just waiting for the date before we release more information. Again, I thought it very important that we come back to that to make sure that you and the community know that this is something we've taken very, very seriously. It's been on all of our minds all summer long, and we just wanted to make sure that we were able to follow up with our students and staff as they return to school and support them. So, thank you for that. I will say, there are some additional materials that were included in your packet, including just a printout of the wellness website, as well as a memo that had been done a few years ago that outlines some of the district work around this in the last few years. That's not really for the discussion purposes tonight. Tonight was more just reporting back to you, but that is something we've received from feedback from some committee members, that that's something that people may be interested in more of a wellness update, as a general update as we head through the year. It's also one of our district goals, so I think that'll be important to come back to. So, just wanted to acknowledge that feedback as well. Last update is a little bit of a happier update. I'm just so excited. Deborah Bookus was wonderful in putting together a memo for me around the various professional learning activities that took place throughout all of our schools over the summer. I think this is something that the community and parents can often assume, that teachers have multiple months off during the summer, and that's really not the case. Oftentimes, in the summer, that's where teachers are resting and recharging, but more often, they're engaging in additional professional learning to help them prepare for the next school year and to grow some of the skills that they don't necessarily have time to do during the school year. You have an overview of that, but I think what I want to highlight is that we had 117 different educators across the district participate in 23 different research and development projects. That's very exciting, because those are the types of projects that impact students directly the following year. I also want to let you know that some of the work that happened over professional learning was directly related to the district's long-range strategic plan, and some examples of that include the work on equity through the data equity team, data inquiry team, excuse me, also working around the seeking educational equity and diversity training, and you're going to be hearing more about that as we go through the year. You might have heard CEED training, that's what it stands for. And then also through our Challenge Success workshops that have also taken place over the summer. So, we're just really, really excited about that. Deb, thank you so much for all the work you did on that, and much appreciated. You can certainly read more about it in the packets, because we provided you that memo. I also want to thank Dawn and the high school administrative team for helping to put together this list of all of the work that's been done. Dawn has been tremendous in leading this work across the district. Dawn has been tremendous in leading this work across the district for a number of years now, remarkably thorough. Just such an impressive commitment to making sure that students' mental health and wellness is taken care of and put at the forefront of the district. So thank you both for all that work. With that, I will stop talking. So thank you very much and that's my update for tonight. As a reminder, we will be posting this on our website and sending that link out to all of the families in the community tomorrow.
Are there any questions or concerns? Angie?
Yeah, just want to thank you for the extensive work that has been done. So I just want to clarify. So you're just saying that for the wellness because it's a really topic that's very important to everybody. So is there a follow-up meeting or will be discussed in the next meeting?
I don't know as it'll be discussed in the next meeting because in order to prepare for presentations, oftentimes that can take several weeks to gather the information and be able to present it back. I think what we'd like to do is Diane and I will talk at our regular weekly meeting and be able to schedule that into an upcoming agenda. I'm hoping maybe a little bit later in the fall, I think is probably a little bit more realistic because we also want to be able to gather some of the different questions that have come in via members.
I'll just remind new members that formal requests for getting something on the agenda should be sent to me as well. So Mary?
First, I want to thank you for the follow-up particularly on the suicide that had happened this summer. In particular, I want to know the QPR training, would that be something appropriate for like high school students to attend? Or do you think it's?
I think our Assistant Superintendent understood that I was about to delegate a question over to her, so thank you. Dawn, I'll let you take it.
I could feel it coming. The, we train our students in SOS at grades seven, nine, 11 and 12 and they actually learn, it's a very similar methodology, but it's ACT, it's Acknowledge, Care, Tell. So it's a little bit simpler for sort of teenagers to understand. This one is really meant for adults in the community. And there are 10 of us trained across, there are four of us in the district and then we've got Acton Police. We've got some folks from the faith community, from Danny's Place, from, it was an awesome training that we did this summer. So there's 10 of us ready to provide a whole bunch of trainings this year for the community. So we're hoping that we get a really good turnout and that everybody sort of becomes ready to know about it.
Item, oh, I'm sorry, Angie.
Along the suicide thing, there's a lot of information that district provided. I was wondering, because for the parents, there is a communication chart and it's very easy to reference. I was wondering, there's like a student communication chart for the student because there's so much information that's provided from the district. And if there's a chart that for the student and when they need some help, they can reference to it. And I also include in there this, you know, some kind of emotional consideration. What if, you know, the student wants to, doesn't want to talk to this person and building some flexibility in there?
No, I think that's a really interesting idea and I understand where the question comes from. I think with students, I guess my default is that I would rather put all of that attention into making sure that the relationships between the students and faculty are strong enough that any student could approach any faculty member at any time and ask a question and be directed to the right resource. So I think from a student standpoint, it's about developing relationships and then making sure our faculty understand how to direct students to the appropriate member of the professional staff to seek those resources. I just don't know if I'd ever want a student to have to feel like they go to a chart to ask a question. I think I'd want them to just be able to ask any person in the building.
Thank you. So I totally understand the, you know, to build a relationship. So in the follow-up, then I would love to hear, you know, all the programs that has been initiated to collaborate the student and the staff, you know, to build a relationship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Angie. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item seven. Our superintendent is engaged in a new superintendent's induction program as you all are probably well aware. Tonight, we have Dr. Matt King here to provide an update.
Sure. It's nice being back in Acton. I started my career in Carlisle where I spent 10 years as superintendent. And then I moved over to your rival, Lincoln Sudbury, and I was superintendent there for seven years. So I spent many an afternoon and an evening at athletic events here. I was very, very friendly with your former superintendent, Bob Kessler, who I'm sure very few of you remember Bob's name, but he was a very close friend. I hired his daughter to teach in Wellesley and after Lincoln Sudbury, I went to Wellesley and I spent 11 years there. So it's nice being here. I was doing some little math in my head. I think I've been to approximately 800 school committee meetings. So it's nice being on the other side. It's, but it really is, it's a privilege for me at this point in my life to be in this program where I get to coach new superintendents. In this particular incident, Peter I met actually 16, 17 years ago. He was a student of mine in a principal leadership training program. So it's been great to get reconnected with Peter in this role. And the program that I work in called the, it's the new superintendent induction program. It's a collaborative program between the Mass Association of School Superintendents and your district, and the districts and the state, the State Department of Education. And there are 41 new superintendents in Massachusetts this year. And the program involves, there are two components of it. There are about seven, there are seven content days where all 41 people get together with their coaches and we have a curriculum that we go through. The focus of the curriculum is around, I think of really there are two strands. One is about relationship building and the other is about developing a strategic plan. And at the beginning phase, we, you'll be hearing a lot more about this from Peter is the entry plan is to really try to learn as much as possible about the district. What are the strengths? What are the challenges? How can he be helpful? What expectations do people have of him? And my job as a coach this first year, I have six hours a month when I'm available. And I spend my time, usually I come here twice a month for three hours each. And during that time, part of the agenda is what's on Peter's mind and we'll raise questions. And the approach that we take is really very much to try to help him think through problems and challenges and dilemmas. And I always like to think in this business, there are problems where there are solutions and there are dilemmas that there aren't solutions, but you have to manage them. And in the school business, there are far more dilemmas than there are problems. And so my job is to try to help him think through that. We also will be spending time in schools, visit classes, spending time with principals, attending leadership team meetings, both at the central office and in the schools. And we do that, we have six hours the first year, the second year, we have four hours a month. And the third year, there is an individual coaching, but the new superintendents meet as a group approximately monthly. So that's the program and any questions that you have, happy to answer them.
I'd just like to make a comment. I really appreciate you working with Peter. When, when he was coming into the district, the one thing a number of us asked was that he tried to get a coach who had regional experience. And so we really appreciate the experience that you're bringing in that area to it. Thank you.
Just going to make it a short visit for him.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Item eight on our agenda is a transportation update.
All right, so the moment you have all been waiting for, transportation. I think it's on everyone's mind. I primed you with I don't know how many pictures of buses. I will start by saying, you know, you might have expected JD to be giving the update. I actually told him to take the night off. He has been burning both ends of the candle, so to speak, trying to get these buses up and running, make sure our plans were laid. And I think, you know, he needed to go spend some time with family and it's something that I'm pleased to be able to take the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about transportation. What I'm hoping to do tonight is to talk through a memo that I put out as a late memorandum. And I know it's very difficult as a school committee member to receive something the day of a meeting and be able to read all of it. I will tell you, it would have been very challenging to write an accurate transportation update if I had put this out with the original packet considering we had never put a kid on a bus. So I did choose to release it late for that reason. So my apologies. I will try not to do that to you very often, but I think tonight it's for a good cause. Knowing that some people in the audience also may not have had an opportunity to do this, I will walk right through the memo because I think this is important information for our community to hear. What I'm going to try and talk about is some of the challenges that we've had, how we're approaching, trying to solve some of those challenges and problems and also talk about some of the dilemmas, as Matt indicated, where, you know, it's really a balancing act between some different families' needs. I think at the heart of this, I hope everyone here appreciates that we very much understand as an administrative team that we're dealing with people's children, which is by far the most important person in any parent's life. And we understand that there's people on the other end of these decisions and that when we make decisions around bus stops and transportation changes and route lengths and things like that, they're not just numbers. We do understand we're dealing with real people, but sometimes we're also dealing with the constraints of trying to balance priorities and implement this new system. So I will say, overall, we've had a remarkably successful couple of days in the transportation system. I was able to get to the junior high school on the first day and we actually, the number says 42. It's actually 40. I apologize for that typo, but we had 40 buses roll through a junior high school. I've asked some former colleagues of mine in different districts to guess how many buses went through a junior high school and they said, well, how many students? I said, 900-ish and they said, well, maybe 15 buses. And I said, no, you're not even close. Okay, 20 buses. I said, not even close. Try 40. So it's a staggering number of buses that we have in this district and we are one of the largest transportation systems in Massachusetts outside of the major cities. So just to put that in perspective, we have between 3,500 and 4,000 students each day who ride our buses to and from school. That is over 1,500 individual bus stops across the district that each take place two times a day. And of that, we operate 80 individual bus routes. And 80 in the morning and again 80 in the afternoon. So just, I want to make sure as we talk about some of the transportation challenges that we face, that's really in perspective of 3,500 to 4,000 students, 1,500 bus stops and 80 bus routes. I think that's really important information to share for perspective. To redesign, redesign an entire busing system is really no small feat and JD and the entire transportation department have done a remarkable job getting this off the ground and running. We know there's challenges. We know there's still work to be done, but to get this working for the first day of school and actually have it function is a tremendous feat and I want to just make sure I thank them. There are some issues that we're working through and we want to resolve. First, we realized that, we got some feedback from families that some people took the posted bus route time as an absolute time and we know particularly in the first few days of school that those are not always accurate times. When we publish those bus route times, it's actually a computer-generated time based on an algorithm in a computer system that looks at historical data and everything else that, you know, none of us in here want to get into the statistic and statistical analysis of. But we do that as a convenience for families so they understand there's approximate times. We have been trying to work with families to help them understand, we do need parents at the bus stops 10, either 10 minutes before or 10 minutes after. There's usually about that 20-minute window when a bus could arrive. So we are just encouraging people to do that. We also know that over the next two weeks, as these routes normalize themselves and we understand actual ridership, those numbers will become a lot more predictable for families. So we just need a little bit of patience in these first two weeks, but it has been a challenge for people and I wanted to make sure you understood that we're working on it. We also know that during the first two weeks of school, bus drivers are also learning their routes. You know, they are paid for the school year that we all, when students are here, they're not paid a lot of additional time beyond that. And so bus drivers have to learn routes as well. They don't have their cell phones out with ways on it. We would be horrified if drivers were looking at their cell phones while they're driving students. So they really have to know their routes. There are times when drivers take a wrong turn in the first few days of school. It causes them to be rerouted. It might add some additional time. Or there may be additional traffic getting on and off campus. So we know ride times can be a little bit extended during the first few days. One of the things that we're working with families around is this impact of consolidating all of our bus stops and we know that was a long topic of discussion before you this spring. I wanted to provide some data back to you about how many bus stop change requests we've received because I think that's an important piece of information. So to date, we've received 105 different email requests for bus stop evaluations between the day we posted our bus stops and today. When we eliminate the duplicate requests, we actually have received requests to evaluate 87 different individual bus stops. That is just under 6% of all of the 1,500-plus bus stops that we have. Again, I think it's all about perspective. Specifically, our team received 55 requests prior to the start of the school year and 32 requests since the beginning of the school year. We have focused our efforts to date on resolving the requests to evaluate stops that we received before the start of the school year. We needed to pause that because at a certain point, you know, which was last Friday afternoon, we had to repost these routes, send them out to families and then as, you know, so proverbially, so to speak, you do not want to be building the plane while you're flying it. So we paused. We're not evaluating stops right now, but over the next week or two, as these bus routes normalize, we will continue to evaluate the requests that come in. Process for evaluating safety, you know, each evaluation we complete on an individual basis. We take into account a variety of factors when we evaluate the safety of a bus stop. These include the posted speed limit, presence of adequate sight lines to and from the stop, the availability of sidewalks or some other suitable walking area for students to access the stop. We look at traffic patterns during both the morning and afternoon commutes as well as the suitability of the actual waiting area where students will be standing waiting for the stop and the presence of any dangerous road conditions that we may not have anticipated. If in evaluating the safety of a stop, our transportation department has any concerns, we also seek an independent evaluation which is conducted by either the Acton or Boxborough Police Departments. I will reiterate that each assessment is unique and I can tell you firsthand because I have helped out with a couple of these that, you know, parents have contacted me for an additional look at it. And I can tell you that each request takes between 30 minutes and two hours to complete a thorough bus stop evaluation request because it often involves driving the site, looking at it, looking at detailed maps. There could be other data that we have to look at around that. So these are very, very time-consuming and for that reason, if a parent submits a request, it could be several days to a week before they hear back from us around the status of that. So we appreciate people's patience as we work through these, but it's really so we can be effective and thorough in the evaluation. So as of today, the transportation department completed 55 bus stop assessments. And I think this is good data because one of the pieces of feedback that we've heard throughout both communities is that the transportation department has been rigid at times in their assessment and is just holding a line that we apply the policy blanket, there's no real thought that goes into the challenge of bus stop requests. And we've heard that from a number of families, but I want to provide some data around this because I think it speaks otherwise. So of the 55 bus stop assessments we've completed, the transportation department actually changed 35 of the bus stops as a result of that. And there were 14 bus stops that were left as originally planned. There are a small number of requests where parents requested that the student ride a different bus. When we looked at that, what we realized is the bus doesn't actually serve the elementary school the child goes to because of the inter-district choice model that we have. So I think that was something that we had to look at. We obviously said no to those because a child would be arriving at the wrong school. And then we also had a very, very small number of requests which we're currently evaluating based on some specific medical needs. So that's something we're also looking at. So you will see, you know, 35 and 14 does not equal 55. I want to be completely transparent about that, but there are a small number of different requests that fall outside the lines. There are, however, some requests that we did not change based on the results of our safety assessments and we did determine that they were deemed safe and appropriate as bus stops. I looked at the pattern that occurred over these types of requests and there were really two broad categories that arose through the analysis of that. One was, and I don't want this to sound condescending in a way, but it was, because it had a major impact on families, but it was inconvenient in some way for a parent to be able to get their child to that bus stop. It didn't work with a specific family schedule. It's important for the family, but it was around a convenience model. There wasn't necessarily a safety issue involved in it. And another pattern that arose were families who were concerned about the impact of inclement weather on the safety of a bus stop. So what will happen when we get six feet of snow? Will that bus stop still be safe? You know, unfortunately, when it comes to the convenience type of factor... You know, unfortunately, when it comes to the convenience type of factors, we really couldn't use that as a determining factor as to whether or not to move a bus stop. We understand that it has an impact on the family, but we also know that the more bus stops we try to add or change, we're also increasing route times, and we are right at that forty-five-minute time limit that you had discussed last year in your wish for that. And particularly over the first few days of school, we're actually exceeding some of that because we know things take a little bit longer as we work out these times. So we just couldn't factor that in, and I don't anticipate that we'll be able to do that moving forward, I just want to be upfront with that. Regarding the weather, this is something that we talked about internally, and we've decided that we want to look at this a little bit different way. Incliment weather doesn't happen all one hundred and eighty days that students are coming to school, and we want to be more flexible with that. So what we're sharing with families is that anytime any bus driver feels that a bus stop becomes unsafe based on the road conditions that they see in the moment, they're certainly authorized to just change the bus stop with the students and families at the stop. They can just say, you know what, I am going to turn this road because I don't think this major road is safe, or I need to meet you twenty feet down the road a bit because I think it's a safer location for your children to wait. Bus drivers can do that, but if a family also has a concern that arises around the location of a bus stop because of inclement weather, when there is the inclement weather and it does become a concern, families should contact us then, and we'll be happy to look at it and talk about maybe a different bus stop. Both of those would be temporary solutions, because again, the more stops we add and the more changes we make, the longer the individual student ridership becomes on those stops. So we certainly will be flexible during inclement weather, and I don't think there's any family in our district that would complain if we said, look, we had to turn down a couple extra streets in bad weather, and I know it extended your ride time by five or ten minutes, but it was for the safety of everyone. I think that's a very reasonable solution to a problem that seemed to be occurring Finally, and this speaks a little bit to some of the comments during the public speaking portion of this, you know, safety of our students is a topic that we've prioritized, and we talked extensively about as an entire administrative team over the summer. We follow the Thumbs Up for Safety Protocol, that's not new this year, but it's certainly something I want to mention, and we linked in this memorandum. But we spent time at our leadership retreat discussing bus stop safety and how to make sure we were consistent in the application of the various rules that we had. We then spent time analyzing the current safety protocols and the current student expectations we had on buses, and we revised those expectations. We have since sent them out to families to make sure that everyone's aware, and we did that in a variety of formats. And then finally, we're really working with all of our students, particularly in the elementary schools, because there are a lot of students on each of these buses. And what we're doing is we are having classroom teachers emphasize school bus safety with their children and review the expectations. We are also having all of our bus drivers, excuse me, our administrators are holding grade-level meetings with all of our students across the district to also emphasize the bus safety, and then we're taking each of our buses and going to the elementary schools, and we're having the bus driver, the classroom teacher, the administrator board the buses with the students, talk through bus safety once again, review the expectations, and actually have students practice these procedures as a way to try and be proactive around our expectations. We also, as an administrative team, reviewed our protocols for bus drivers to report incidents of student behavior, and our expectations as administrative team of how that would be followed through. No two cases are unique, so I can't talk about specific cases of how we would handle, you know, student discipline. I am certainly happy to do that with families on an individual basis if that becomes a concern, but I would encourage families to talk to their school-based administrators about that because they're the point of contact where problems can get resolved the quickest. Staffing was the other area that I just wanted to briefly update you on. We are not immune to staffing challenges around bus drivers, which is really a regional issue in this part of the state and across the state. We also had a number of bus drivers who committed to us prior to the start of the school year that they'd be joining our team and then backed out of that just as we were approaching the start of the school year. So we are still a couple of bus drivers short, so if anyone in the audience, Ryan, you might be first on the list, wants to drive a bus, you're in. But if we do, you know, we're still trying to hire a couple of bus drivers to fill out our routes. The way we've been able to operate so far to get the school year started, we actually have used our transportation managers as well as our dispatcher, who are also licensed bus drivers, taken them out of the office and had them actually driving routes. The impact of that has been it does slow our communication down because the people who traditionally are answering the phones are now out on bus routes, and J.D. is really sometimes even working alone in the office during pickup and dismissal times to try and respond to, you know, six different elementary schools' families calling into one office. We are asking families to reserve calls during bus route times to only emergency situations, and we're also asking that of our schools because we just cannot handle the call volume. We understand how frustrating that can be for families, but we just right now don't have the staff, and it's something we're working on, but we recognize. So with that said, hopefully that talks you through some of the various issues we've seen, our general approach to trying to resolve some of the concerns that families have had because we recognize their real, we recognize the impact that those have on families, and just one final time, I just want to, A, thank J.D. and his entire team because this has been monumental undertaking to produce this new change, but then second, I want to just remind everyone that this was really a wellness initiative. This was part of the district's commitment to later start times for our high school students, and it was also responsive to surveys conducted with our elementary parents to move to one tier of elementary busing service as opposed to having early and late start times. So we know that with any major change, what it really is is sometimes balancing priorities. We're working to make the changes smooth as possible for everyone, but we do anticipate it's going to take some time, and we'll be certainly talking to you as the year progresses. So thank you and happy to answer any questions.
That was a really thorough report, thank you. And I have a lot of sympathy for the people who are trying to manage all of this, and I do hope that families remain flexible and patient. I think this is, I think this is a big transition. I wonder if you have heard much about overcrowding on buses. For instance, my kids report kids sitting on the floor, the aisles of the bus.
I did also receive that comment from a member earlier today, although it was actually around that maybe children were misunderstanding that we have a color coding system for different grade levels on the buses because for safety reasons, we have our kindergarteners set up closest to the driver, and then our sixth graders go to the back of the bus because they're a little bit more independent. I think there was some confusion around that for some, maybe some of our younger students who thought that because they were in second grade, they couldn't sit in the only available third-grade seat or something like that. I am going to send something out to the principals and see if they can just review it and make sure that every child is sitting in a seat. I would actually hope that our bus drivers too can just check the buses before a bus ever moves and make sure every child is seated. We did not oversubscribe any of our buses, to my knowledge, so there should be a seat for every child. I think it may not be that a child has a seat where they wanted it, or they could easily find it, so we'll clarify that. I think that was great feedback. I think Angie, you had sent that email as well, so thank you.
Is three to a seat kosher? Is that, is that, just, do people know?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yep.
Paul.
Thank you, Peter. You mentioned, you know, the staffing issues, and I think J.D. has mentioned this before, and it's not the only year that we've had, you know, that kind of challenge. But what I want to make sure is that, I mean, we've, the staffing issue is that we're, we can't hire the number of bus drivers that we've budgeted for, or is it, or is it a budget issue?
It's the former. It's we can't hire the number of bus drivers we've budgeted for. We have money in the budget to be able to fill the positions, we just can't find the people that can fill those positions. I think that's a challenge that we're going to have into the foreseeable future. I think that's also an important point because I think at the last meeting, and I can't remember who mentioned it, someone suggested that as the year progresses, in order to still be responsive to families, maybe we want to consider adding more buses next year and budgeting for that. We can try to do that, but the problem is if we can't even fill our current capacity with drivers, we could have, you know, ten more buses, and without the drivers, it wouldn't make a difference. So I think we're probably reaching a tipping point with the Transportation Department. We're probably about as big as we can get. I think another consideration is when we designed years back the transportation system, we staffed the transportation office in terms of dispatchers and managers, and also in terms of our mechanic, mechanical staff that we use to support it, was really staffed for about twenty buses, and we're now operating forty buses. So it's not just a bus driver shortage, it's also a more systemic support issue that we have to consider.
Mary.
I want to echo Maya's comment about the detail. We've talked about, it's really hard to sit here and hear parents' concerns and then hear a reply of, we've assessed it and it's safe. You gave us much more specificity about what you're looking for and how you assess that and the decision-making, and it really helps. So I appreciate all of that detail and all of the work that you and others in the district are doing. Two other comments around the safety training for the kids, and in response to the earlier comment we heard from Christine, I wonder if, well, I think they should also be emphasizing that behavior and etiquette on the bus is a part of safety. I think we do need to make sure we have the right policies in place, and the policies are being followed, but I think also stressing behavior and etiquette as part of safety.
Can I just jump in on that before you go on to the next comment? Because I think that's a great comment, and I actually forgot to mention this, and I should have put it in my memo as well, but we're actually running monthly professional development for all of our bus drivers throughout the year, and a lot of that professional development will be focused on how do you manage student bus behaviors, and how do you appropriately interact with students in a positive way. That's also a driving force behind why we're bringing our buses to the various schools, because we want students to develop relationships with bus drivers, so that bus drivers aren't just seen as a person who take, you know, a thing that takes kids to and from home, but they're actually viewed as people in the kids' lives who are really charged with caring for them just eighty at a time.
And God bless them. And then I just wanted to, maybe you'd comment, because not all of us were here at the last meeting, you might mention the app that's available so that parents can be checking in, and hopefully that could help keep them off the phone during the driving times. I can mention it if, so.
I love being the new person.
So J.D. did report to us, I think last year that they hoped to implement this, but he said this year it is implemented, that we can get real-time updates about where our buses are. And so I don't have a whole lot of detail, but I think if folks are interested, if they look to our website and see what's there, I think that that can help with some of the questions. And then I will emphasize that on my daughter's first day, one of six kids got to the bus stop in time because they didn't get there. It does say with all the postings, ten minutes ahead of the schedule, and not everyone was there then. So, you know, I think we do need to, I always take two weeks, we time it every day, and then we see where is it falling out, and then you don't need to give a whole ten minutes, but you do at the beginning.
And that is an experienced parent approach, yeah.
Tessa.
Well, two things. I'm looking on the transportation website, and I don't see a link to an app. I know that that was something that people were looking for because I read some of those comments too.
Yeah.
So.
So maybe at our next meeting.
I don't want to send everyone there if there's nothing there.
Yeah, maybe at our next meeting, there can be an update as to that, the specifics around that.
But I also just had a question, sort of following up on what Maya said, and I can't quite figure it out, but my daughter confirmed that her bus, which is the junior high high school bus, is far more crowded than it was last year, and if we have more buses but the same number of junior high and high school students, why is that?
I don't know. It's certainly something I can look into. I can tell you on the first day, when it was just seventh grade and ninth grade, as the buses were rolling through, I saw three and four students getting off the bus. So, you know, it's certainly not something I saw firsthand, but I can look into it. Maybe you can email me the bus number, and I can certainly check.
I also read a comment from a couple of people on, you know, on Active Parents page or something like that complaining about that and wondering how that could possibly be, and it may have been a perception issue. I mean, like I said, but my daughter said that hers is more crowded than last year, and I was just curious.
So I know that the, in the, the report that came out a few years ago, I want to say GPI, I don't remember the exact name of the company that did the busing assessment, only a certain percentage at the time of high school and junior high school students were riding the bus. I'm wondering if the later start times, with the later start times, more, a higher percentage of kids are riding.
I wonder if it'll drop off as kids get licenses and, you know, and I imagine it's more crowded in the morning than it is in the afternoon for sure.
Yeah, I think every year, they're heavier at the beginning, particularly in the afternoon when kids start staying for clubs and all of those kinds of things, it starts being a little less crowded, but, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to take, Mom, did you have your hand up, Eileen?
Yeah, I think I want to support that, like me, I don't send my kids to the school in the morning anymore. Three of them ready in the bus now, so that's exactly.
Maya.
Only because we're so thoroughly assessing busing at this moment, I just want to reference the shortage. As long as I've been on the school committee, we've had a shortage of bus drivers, and J.D. has had a hard time with hiring. I think one of the things we might want to look at is the fact that it's not a full-time position, and it doesn't pay as such. And I don't remember if it's three-quarters, if it's point seven-five or point eight, but I think that that's one of the hardships in hiring for school bus drivers. I think that they can often make up some extra hours if they do after-school driving for sports, but it creates like a very long, drawn-out day for bus drivers that begins very early in the morning and ends, and, you know, that's like a fourteen-hour day for a lot of people. So it's just something to sort of tuck away and talk about later, but I think it's one of our issues, because I think this happens to us annually, and now we may be in an even worse situation with hiring.
Yeah, Mary.
Maya, I appreciate the point. It's not unique to us. Bus drivers across the country are hard to hire. Truck drivers, you may have read similarly, there are great benefits to having a strong economy and low unemployment, but this is one of the hard things about it. We have been strategizing in those ways. We did increase the salary scale a couple of years ago, but you're exactly right, there's no work for three to four hours in the middle of the day. So it's sort of three hours in the morning, three hours in the afternoon. It's roughly a thirty-hour work week. Some of the drivers then do the midday kindergarten route, some of the drivers do athletic events and other events after school. It's a hundred and eighty days or a hundred and ninety days. Some of them have summer camps and that kind of thing, so all of that adds up to what you're talking about. We're trying to be creative about middle-of-the-day work. We have a few of our bus drivers who also work in our food services department. So we're trying to sort of make it as attractive as we can without, you know, creating more positions per se. So we appreciate the comments. It's been an issue for about five years. We had a very stable department, and many bus drivers who had been with us for twenty-plus years, and many of whom retired in a two- to three-year period, and that still is happening. So it's, we're doing everything we can, we're advertising in other ways than we haven't in the past. There's a lot of word of mouth, a lot of new immigrants to the area that are coming to work for us, which is really exciting, but thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So some of the concern that I heard is that the longer ride, especially for the younger kids and with kids with special needs. So I want to find out what is the process, what is the moving forward process? I understand everything has been, you know, right now at this stage, that we're trying to stabilize it. So what is the moving forward process? Does, if there's any other issues, so parents still go to Info Finder and file their information, and will we reevaluate? At what point that we will consider to, you know, either add more bus or add more stop, and is there, what is kind of moving forward, what's the process for the parents?
You know, I think this is going to be one of those dilemmas, because I, the transportation system was budgeted for and designed around forty buses to be able to make this shift. We are, right now, I had the data as of two weeks ago, so I don't want to cite exact numbers, but nearly all of our routes are right at the forty-five-minute time limit that School Committee had provided. There were a couple of routes prior to the start of school that were just over fifty minutes, and J.D. and I had talked about those in an effort to focus on reducing those ride times. I don't know, in all honesty, that there's really going to be a solution this year to reduce the ride time. reduce the ride time for students much. We just don't have the buses available, we don't have the staffing available. You know, the system has already been designed with just about the maximum efficiency we can get out of it. So I think, you know, it's one of those things that what we're really trying to manage is student experiences. I can give you a couple of examples of some strategies we have put in place. JD found that there were a couple of bus routes where students had a forty-five-minute ride in the morning, and then they were also the last students dropped off in the afternoon, because it was kind of a reversal of that route. So some of the students were riding the bus forty-five minutes in the morning and forty-five minutes in the afternoon. What we found is that if we can reverse the afternoon route, maybe we can reduce the afternoon ride time for a student to, you know, ten minutes to fifteen minutes. And then the students who had the shorter ride time in the morning might have had the longer ride time in the afternoon. I can tell you, as we've made some of those changes, we've disappointed some people as well, who maybe had shorter ride times overall. So again, there's no one solution that we're going to be able to put in place to really make everyone as happy as they'd like to be. I feel badly about that, but it's really about kind of managing individual students' experiences at this point and trying to be equitable.
Yeah. So, um, thank you. So the process moving forward, so if they have any issue, they still go to the Info Finder and communicate with the transportation directly?
Absolutely.
Okay. So will we, at some point, so I assume that the transportation department will consider some, if, at some point, that we will reevaluate this, or, you know?
So I think you made, Peter made reference to a queue that has been formed, and, yeah. So you, at this point, you have to kind of get in line, is my understanding.
Yeah, we're working through all the various issues that come in, and as we get new requests to review stops, you know, we'll certainly work through those. But insofar as looking at the overall system, you know, it's really not practical to do that now that we're up and running mid-year. And again, even if we decided we wanted to add buses and we found the money for that, I don't know as though we'd find the drivers to be able to support it.
One last comment.
Well, this is now regarding the transportation. Nobody has talked about the moving the time, because that's very well accepted by a lot of students, and a lot of teachers and students are very, very happy with the new time. I just want to mention that. Thank you.
For sure. It kind of makes us all feel better when we know that we're doing this for the benefit of students and wellness, for sure. Thank you so much. I was going to joke around that you really need to be thorough. That was incredibly thorough. I was particularly impressed with the interaction, the personal touch, the interaction between the bus, the bus drivers and the school administration and the kids. The more familiar they are with bus drivers and the process and all the disciplinary issues and all the things they need to know to have a safe and quick bus ride home, the better. And I was really happy to hear that. I was also happy to hear about that the system is set up to adjust. So adjust for inclement weather, adjust at bus drivers' discretion, and I think that makes for a very responsive system, and I hope that the public appreciates that responsiveness in the end, once we kind of get through the tough changes that we've had to weather, moving to new start times and all the fallout in terms of transportation that that created. One of my concerns is that the department is either at capacity or overcapacity at this point. So I'm wondering if that needs to be addressed down the road, or now, perhaps.
You know, I think that's certainly something, you know, we can take a look at. I think what I'd like to do is, you know, really what we need to do now is just normalize our routes and get things going. And then I think, you know, as we head into the next budget cycle, it certainly is something we can talk about. And then it's trying to balance all of the different priorities that come up in a budget cycle. But I do, they are definitely at capacity. You can see it on the staff faces, because they wear it. You know, there's, as I said earlier, there's nothing more precious to a family than their child, and so sometimes frustration around the bus routes can come out as they're interacting with staff. And I know our staff take that very, very personally as well, but they really are trying to make good decisions for kids within the parameters they have. But I think it's a fair, fair comment.
On transportation, Eileen? Quick?
I think I really want to say, I think it's even very complicated. However, this is the first time I think we set up a channel there for a parent to see something and reflect what, you know, it's not like necessarily complain, but it's really give the feedback of what the road, the routing, or maybe the stop. And I, as I remember, we never had that before. I really appreciate this kind of a great channel and great communication. Thank you.
We have reached item number nine on the agenda, subcommittee reports. Mary, do you have a report about the building?
Yes. So as you all know, we have Skanska on board as our OPM. This summer, we contracted with Arrow Street as our designer. We're very excited to be working with them. They really see the, yes, the challenges, but even more the opportunities that we have with our sites. Tomorrow, we have a kickoff meeting with MSBA at the Douglas School, and that's really to work with them so they can make us very aware of what their expectations are, so that we can be fulfilling those. We are working, the administrative team is working with Arrow Street around the educational visioning and trying to set an appropriate process that builds on the visioning we did with Doran Whittier, but meets the expectations of MSBA in this stage of our work, and really helps us to delve even more into the twin-school concept and to get our school and community involved. And then we're beginning the site work, Arrow Street is beginning the site work, to look at the sites and the buildings and the resources within there and the gaps within there. So that's where we are.
Amy, I'm going to hand it over to you for a policy update and a budget update.
Okay, so budget is still being scheduled. You don't have a date for us yet, Beth, right? Hopefully tomorrow. So we, the first budget subcommittee meeting should be before too long, hopefully in the next week or so. Policy, again, Beth is setting up the first policy meeting, and I think the plan for the first policy meeting is really just to kind of go over what we do as a, because we have so many new members, what we do as a policy subcommittee, and kind of how just the logistics behind going through policies and explaining how we develop and how we work with the administrators and professionals to develop these policies, and then what the procedure is once we bring it to full school committee. Just kind of a review of that, and then probably some discussion over the policies that we want to look at this year. So I will let people know when those are scheduled. Should know soon.
Item nine point four is a report on the update of our school committee protocols, and for this, I'm going to turn the mic over to you, Peter.
All right, thank you. So we had a couple of meetings to talk about the school committee protocols, which is something that is a large group we discussed at our summer workshop with Dorothy Presser. What we did is we took the existing protocols that the school committee had in place since, I think it might have been 2015, and put those into more of a bulleted format, which is something that the committee had expressed interest in, to make them a little bit clearer and more actionable. At that point, we met for a first time and compared what we had put into bulleted format with a couple of other examples of different operating protocols around the state. We particularly thought some of Melrose's protocols were effective, and so we incorporated a lot of that language into that first draft. We then had a second meeting and had some different members participate in the second meeting and got more feedback, and we took a look at the original version, made some revisions to that, tried to incorporate feedback that we had heard along the way from the various members through our first and second meetings. And then we had a little bit of a discussion about it, and we had two choices. We could either continue to meet as a subgroup and try and come up with, you know, the perfect version of operating protocols, or we could put it to the committee as a draft format and really think about how we can solicit your feedback tonight, take the feedback tonight, go back, meet one more time, try and incorporate as much of the feedback as possible, and then bring it back to the full committee. I think we also recognize that with a committee of eleven, everyone views something a little bit differently. And so in the end, we may not have a document that everyone thinks is perfect, but we think is going to be effective in moving our work forward as a group. So with that said, you have the document before you, and I'll turn it over to Diane again.
So I hope you've all had a chance to look over the protocols. We're looking for comments that you may have, reactions, any edits, improvements you want to suggest. Tessa.
It looks good. So I didn't go to the second subcommittee meeting, so I only know what we talked about in the first, and I think it looks good. In the first section, under Support the Achievement, Educational Welfare and Wellbeing of All Students, the first bullet, I understand why it's all in one thing, because leaving the implementation of strategies and operations to the superintendent and staff, I don't know if, to me, to me, that one's really long. Like, I was ready to stop reading after teaching and learning, and so I think that that's an important piece, the leaving the implementation strategies, but I don't know if we could make it its own bullet, or, I know it sounds sort of negative, I guess, but it is something we will do, is leave the implementation strategies and operations to, so I don't know. To me, that one was just really long, and it had two very important pieces in it, so I don't know if there's another place to tack it on or whatever, but that was my only. I liked how you solved some of the problems that we had in the first, like with around language and sounding positive, and particularly the one about public participation. I think you came to a good.
We talked about that a lot.
I know. I think you came, I'm giving you a compliment. I think you came to a good, a good, I don't know. Yeah, well, good job, Peter. That's it.
Beth, you're taking notes too, right? Me too, we're comparing, yeah.
Paul.
I had the same thought as Tessa, and the solution that I was thinking of is if we used a semicolon instead of a comma.
So I'm going to chime in here on that bullet. I also had a note on it. The first clause is to establish a vision, which is certainly our purview. When I read that, my reaction is that, you know, we don't do that alone. We do that, it's a very deep dive with many stakeholders, and that doesn't come through really here. So I wondered if we could craft some language to maybe divide that up into two bullets, because that would even make it long, even longer than it already is, but to communicate the collaborative nature of what it means to establish a vision in a district of this size and with this variety of just people with different views. So, Adam.
Yeah, you know, I look at that one, and I also look at the third bullet in the same section. Both of them sort of imply that there isn't necessarily a vision in either case, and I think that that maybe is not part of the operating principle. Maybe that falls somewhere else, and both of these are around supporting the vision in both cases. And so, you know, I saw that more in the third bullet. It struck me that, do we not have a vision that defines our success and accountability today? And I think that that's a to-do item versus what this is, is an operating principle might be something that says we support that vision. So then the same, Diane could sort of speak to your comment on the first bullet point, whereas if we're supporting the vision, then the creation of the vision is a different task that happens somewhere else, and then we can speak to how that happens and who's involved in it in that way.
Paul? Oh, Mary, I'm sorry.
So I agree with a lot of what's been said. I feel like in that first bullet, the vision, policies, budgets, and accountability are really all done collaboratively, because we don't do it in isolation. We do it with the administration and others as they bring in the appropriate folks. So thinking about that, and I agree completely with, in this document, supporting that, the unified vision and that thing. The other thing I have, and I feel bad that I feel this way, but I'm still going to say it, the second bullet, represent the needs, interests, and achievements of all students in the district and place these above all else in the decisions we make. I will strive to do that. I'm not sure I can achieve that every time, because in our dilemmas, we're going to be able to do some things for some students at some times and other students at other times, and not all students every time. I just, in the real world, believe that's a fact. So maybe thinking about the language around striving to represent or aiming or something, but I'm not going to wordsmith, but that's my feeling.
Paul?
I wanted to elaborate on Mary's comment, because I got stuck at represent, because the heading is a supporting heading. And when I read the second bullet, the sentence reads, you know, if you start from the top, "we will," and the bullet's finished that sentence, and in this case, "we will represent the needs, interests, et cetera." And I'm thinking, we're presenting them to whom? To the parents, to taxpayers, to the students, to the staff? So I would suggest we, and this is language, if I notice, that's just kind of holdover from Melrose, and that's fine. And I like, I actually like the structure that Melrose brings to it. But I'm just wondering if we can just replace represent with support. And I take issue a little bit with injecting the word, because, I mean, again, we've borrowed from Melrose, and that's okay, but we've injected the word achievement, and I bristle a little bit about that, because when we're supporting the needs and the interests, in my opinion, the achievements follow. And my concern is that there are kids who struggle, and if they're like me, they had nothing to show for achievements at all. And, well, I was a late bloomer, so. So anyway, I think, you know, supporting the needs and interests is necessary and sufficient. I just don't think we need to talk about achievement. So that's my two cents.
Tessa and Angie.
I understand what you're saying, Paul. To me, it doesn't say any particular kind of achievement, and I think that one of our goals has been to recognize that children can achieve in all different kinds of ways, and so that's sort of how I read it, was achievements in general. I mean, I'm not going to get in a fight over whether or not we have a word included, you know, but that's how I read it. I didn't read it as, I mean, I hear you, on kids that struggle, but to me, it just says honoring the achievements that, you know, things that we listen to here, you know, when kids do extraordinary things, and we hear about them in front of the committee, whether they come to present to us or we hear about it through principals. I just, I just heard it as, you know, celebrating the achievements in general of all of our students.
Well, there's a word, celebrating. Does that land on you?
And I don't mean to say I'm going to be a curmudgeon on achievement. I mean, of course, I'm concerned, though, that there might be students there that don't feel like they fit in that kind of group, and it's almost like this language is excluding them, and I don't want to do that. I also want to point out that, especially when children are young, what's more important to me is that the struggle they go through is recognized and not necessarily the endpoint, because I think that an achievement for the sake of achievement is hollow, but an achievement that is associated with a struggle and perhaps, you know, risk and error and failure, that is achievement that's rich. So I'm hoping that maybe the language can come up with some distinction that makes it clear to the students that aren't, you know, typical achievers, that they're included as well.
Can I just for thought, maybe the word growth instead? Because that's what I think of when you're challenged, you might fail, but you're learning, and that's growth. So maybe.
Maya.
Or maybe the word process?
Eileen? Eileen.
I think I heard everybody. I think we're probably going to, like Maya said, put growth there, and, but I really don't want to give up with achievement, because I definitely heard Tessa mention that. Let's give an example. This kid have struggled for two things this year, next year. He struggled for only one thing. Here you go, that's the achievement, okay? We just understand the achievement a little bit more generally, not really like, you know, A+, or B+, or C., whatever. It's not, it's really, to a whole district, it's a general, it's very general. If we're not talking about achievement for a whole district's work, we're only serve for needs and interests. That's not district. But achievement has so many different meanings, right? And also, I heard Mary, you said, we cannot represent everybody. Actually, we are, because every children are different, right? So you have two of your girls, and I have three of my kids, I cannot use other kids' half the example here. One kid maybe need new clothes, one kid maybe need new books, and they all get their needs, they all get different things. Doesn't mean we don't give them all they want, we all give them all they want, just they get different things to have. That's what my experience told me. Thank you.
So, I'm going to suggest, this school committee is truly a microcosm of this community, and I appreciate that. We have a very diverse set of values that we bring to the table, and I think that's a really good thing. Looks like, it seems like the word achievement is loaded, and perhaps in the subsequent meeting that the subcommittee has, they can unpack that a little bit and come up with some language that maybe doesn't satisfy everybody, but is more expansive in terms of elucidating what exactly we mean by achievement, because it does mean, you're right, Eileen, it does mean a lot of different things to a lot of people. Mary.
And I just want to say, I think the rest of it is great. I think I like the language and the points that are being made and all of that, so thank you.
Angie.
Yeah, I'm moving forward. So under the professional and the relationship and all time, so, because we are in school that we are encouraging the student, the social, the social and emotional wellness, so as a school committee members, in terms of demonstrating the professional, I was wondering that would like to be, like, we somewhat demonstrate that, be a role model of the social and emotional learner, the SEL program that the district is promoting, then we demonstrated ourselves as a learner and a teacher, so, because that's what the district is promoting for our student, and, but as we are here, then we're demonstrating ourselves, we are the teacher, and we are the learner for the social and emotional learning.
Adam.
I had one other comment, which was on the last bullet, around making the meetings as efficient as possible. And this one, I would add as a reminder for myself as much as everybody else, which is around coming to the meetings prepared, having read the material, and just a reminder that, you know, we get this material in advance, and we have the opportunity to ask those questions prior to coming to this meeting. I think that's something that, you know, like I said, I could always use that reminder, and this, I think, is a really good place to put that for all of us, to remember that we've got at least four or five days prior to when we sit around this table, that we should take advantage of perusing the material and asking the questions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Paul.
This goes back to a comment that was made earlier about vision, and I'm thinking, because there's a third bullet that talks about vision, and I'm wondering if we should put vision up in the title of that set of bullets, supporting the vision. So, I just wanted to put that up.
Okay. I had one last comment for the introductory paragraph. There were two things that struck me. One was this word, "strive," which I hate. Strive is strife, it's inherently kind of antagonistic word, and I'm wondering if that's what we mean, and just to maybe take a second look at that. And the second thing is, I think it's a second sentence that starts with, "We pledge to conduct our business in a professional, respectful, thoughtful, and efficient manner," which is all great, but I wanted to also note that there is an incredibly large body of literature out there that talks about what high-performing boards do. So, I, you don't have to accept my wordsmithing, but I, what I wrote is, "We pledge to conduct our business in accordance with accepted standards for high-performing boards." Those are always evolving, anyway. Harvard Business Review talks about it, the Board Administrator Journal talks about it, and I think it kind of leaves open, leaves us open for kind of continuous improvement. So, I just wondered what y'all might think about that. Mary.
I think that sounds good, except for then, I think there needs to be an attachment that's updated routinely about what those are, because I can't pledge to do that until I know what they are. So, like, I'm not as familiar with that literature, so I would need to learn it, and so just include it with it somehow.
Tessa.
Two things. To follow up on that, I think that one of the things I know we wanted to do was make everything on one page, so my concern with that is the same as Mary's. That is, I mean, I recognize, but maybe it's good to be able to go back to the protocols every once in a while, and review them, and check on, you know, what has changed for high-performing boards. The other thing was, back to this first set of Support the Achievement, Educational Welfare, we already say all of that in that underlined header, so the second bullet really could just say, "We put students above all else in the decisions we make," and then we could leave out all the rest of the language, because it's sort of repetitive the way it is now.
Well, it sounds like this needs to go back to committee, for sure.
But we thank you.
And I have to say that I really do appreciate all the hard work that the committee has put into this. It was time to do this, and this is really fantastic, and I really appreciate it. Eileen. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, repeat that, please.
Do we need discuss, do we need to discuss? I sent some comments to two of you, or we just leave it later to talk about it?
Yeah, I can actually jump in on that. I had a couple different committee members email me comments on this, and because this is actually something for deliberation, I think those comments actually need to be discussed in the public meeting. Whereas if I'm just receiving comments, and then we start incorporating them to the document, that's really not the spirit of the open meeting component of it. So, I would say any feedback on the document, we want to make sure is out there tonight so that we can use that in the next round.
So Beth, can we schedule another meeting for this protocol subcommittee? Okay. Okay. With the goal possibly of having it ready for the 20th? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
One of the most important points that didn't seem to get a lot of discussion was this question of communication strategy, and I've spoken with many of you individually about concerns I have about the way open meeting laws practiced, that it becomes, you know, very much, you know, a siloing operation with respect to the members of the committee. I have talked to our legislators about this issue. I think that's not actually the intent of the law, but I think that because of a variety of reasons, that's what's happened. And I think it's extremely difficult for the committee to, you know, engage in robust information exchange process, you know, develop ideas, have argument, and reach decisions where everything exists as outlined in this document, which is pretty much classic hub and spoke, where everything has to come up, you know, through the hub and go back out, because it doesn't allow for enough iterations to get to, you know, effective deliberation. So I have no proposal for you as to how that might be addressed, but I wanted to highlight that as a concern as you move forward with the document.
I don't really understand that. So could you explain that a little more?
Well, so, if you think about what happens at the meetings, and there was some discussion of the flow of things, you know, getting documents out, getting some commentary back on the documents, being able to incorporate that in the context of compliance with public meeting requirements, and then have a discussion. And if you think about a lot of processes, if you want to do something well, if you say, "Oh, I can iterate five times," that gives you a pretty good shot at finalizing this, and maybe this document's an example. If you said, "I've got one shot, and then I'm done," it's very hard. And if you look at the way issues flow through the school committee meetings, a lot of times you have sort of one or two, and that's really it. And if I think about the way in which you can exchange information, it's just hard, you know, if there's a complicated issue, and, you know, more sort of background information that you want to share, to do that in a way that it really works. And when I read, you know, this last section that talks about things flowing up through the chair and the superintendent, which of course is important in order for the committee and the superintendent to survive, you know, you can't have it be the Wild West, but is also problematic with respect to having a really rich dialogue. And I recall that early in this meeting, Mr. Lys said, "Well, I don't really want people to look, the students to look at a chart and then decide, you know, where to go. I really want to have a little bit more flexibility in the system." So that's the spirit of this comment. One is to figure out, you know, how you can get an extra turn or two into some of these discussions. And the other is, you know, to the extent that people have interest, to go back to the legislator and say, you know, you need to provide some relief for school committees and other boards with respect to the way in which open being laws being practiced. It just hurts the ability of the committee to really digest some very complicated issues.
Okay, I'm seeing no other discussion. We'll move on to school committee reports, item 10. Okay, so we, previous agendas, we've listed all these things out, so I'm just going to kind of call on people, and if you have something to report, please inform us all on the goings-on of the various liaison ships that you have taken on. So, the first one, I'll call on Mary to report on HIT. I don't even think they're meeting until the 20th, but...
That's right, we haven't met through the summer, so.
Okay. Okay. The PTSO liaison, Tessa.
So we sent out an email to all of the members to check on dates, and I believe our first meeting will be October 1st, although I still need to reserve a room.
Okay, our next liaison iship is Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I attended one of their meetings yesterday, and one of the things that, I won't steal Amanda's thunder, but one of the things that I found really cool, they are required to do an annual basic rights workshop, and they collaborate with other districts to do that and rotate through. But what I found interesting is that the basic rights workshop is now on a webinar, and it's available in like four different languages. I think it's like Spanish, Chinese, or Mandarin, I guess. I forgot the other two, but there, it's, I thought that was wonderful, really wonderful. So, that was, I just wanted to report that. Legislative liaison? Anything, I think you've connected with a Facebook page that might interest people?
Yes, you directed me to, and I did, I did read that and sign up for their newsletters.
I think it would, yeah. You want to share that, so people know what kind of work you're involved in?
I mean, essentially, it's just an organization that sends out updates of pertinent information. I'm also trying to get a coffee with Jamie Eldridge, which we've been trying to schedule for a couple months now, so now that the primary's over, I think he's going to have a little bit more time on his hands.
Okay, thank you. Minuteman Tech, turning this over to you, Angie. I've been a little slow to do that, but there's nothing to report on that. We do plan to have them come out to us and give us an update on what's going on with their new building, in October?
Yeah, I don't have the exact, I think it might have been the October 19th meeting, is that, if I'm recalling correctly?
Okay. ALG? I haven't met either, I think we're meeting on the 26th? Okay. Okay. Board of Selectmen?
After a long summer recess, I look forward to getting back in the swing.
Anything going on with FinCom?
Well, I'm glad Christine is here, because after a long summer, I am going to start going to the next meeting, which is, I'm hoping, next Tuesday night? Okay, and anything that we should know before that? No? All right, great.
Moving to Boxborough, the BLF?
I think I reported last time, we haven't met since. I think the next meeting, did we decide on like the 25th? It's, I can't go, I think, because it's like Blanchard's Open House, or maybe it's the Junior High Open House, I can't remember, but it's that week.
Okay. And Tessa, has the Board of Selectmen met then? I know everyone's just starting up, it's, yeah. Okay.
Well, most of it was around special town meeting, which we had, so I imagine that was the crux of most of their meetings that they had leading up to that. So we had special town meeting yesterday.
Last night.
It's been a long week, last night.
I haven't met with the FinCom at all. I will say, at the BLF meeting that we had in August, we did get kind of the schedule of budget planning, so that's out there, and they absolutely had Budget Saturday for us on that, so the FinCom knows that date, has it on their calendar. So, it's a pretty informal thing, but as we build our budget, then I'll be reaching out to them to see if they have any questions. Although, I was thinking, a number of years ago, we did a little budget primer for them, and I was wondering if I should offer that again. It's a nice way for them to understand our budget before, like, the components of it, before we actually are putting it out there, and it's a fairly, there's been a fair amount of turnover on our FinCom, so why don't Dave and Peter caucus and see if you're willing for me to offer that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 11 is a recommendation to accept gifts to the school district.
So I would like to recommend acceptance of a gift of $5,000 with much gratitude from Lowe's for scholarships, to Gates School for a new SMARTboard.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
Move to approve with that.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Sure.
I really appreciate the teachers taking the initiative to go after these types of, is that a grant? Yeah, grant, so I, kudos to the teachers that take that initiative.
Okay, I think that is it for tonight, but please note that everyone has the new Mass General Law, some reading for tonight here.
Is that basically the last?
Yep. So please take that home and use it. It's a great, actually, it's a great reference tool, so it's actually good to have it, so there you go.
Can I?
Oh, okay. Okay. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that on the calendar that's included in our packet, that the junior high and high school early dismissal times are now included. People were asking for them, so.
Can I point out two parent opportunities?
Sure.
So just two quick things in the FBI I want to highlight for you. First, and I mentioned it earlier, but on September 17th, we're doing our suicide prevention training, and this is an adult-focused training. It's offered by AB Cares, it's free and open to the public, and there is a link to an email address where people can sign up. And then second, on October 3rd, and again, on October 10th, we have a workshop series, it's designed to be a two-part series, on building resilience, and it's a parent caregiver series offered by Rena Chudnoffsky, and it is at the gallery at Village Works. Deb, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to shout out to Danny's Place Youth Services. This is a collaborative project, and they're providing the space at the gallery to make this happen, so thank you to them for providing the space for this to happen.
My question was, I saw there was, in that flyer, there was an RSVP button, and I'd like to RSVP, but I don't know how to do that, I'm sorry.
We are going to be sending that out, and so it'll be a live that you can click on, and then do the RSVP through, like, a quick Google survey, so it'll allow people. No, you did not miss it yet. No, you did not miss it yet, so you're getting this first.
Okay. So, before we adjourn, I wanted to just make one last comment, and that is, in the spirit of being a highly efficient board, it is before nine, and we have had the goal of ending at nine, so we're ending early, and I really appreciate the preparation that you did, and the thoughtfulness with which you came to the meeting, and we conducted our business in an efficient manner, and I hope that continues, and I'm sure it will, and I just appreciate every one of you, really, for stepping up and doing this job, which is really hard. It's the breadth and the depth of it is, can be overwhelming, so, thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Seven minutes?
All in favor?
Everybody.
Opposed? Abstentions? Good night, everyone.